Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Trustees' regular meeting for September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. It is seven thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Boarder.
Present.
Trustee Stalker.
Here.
Trustee Olonechak. Trustee Desmond. Trustee Sack.
Here.
Trustee Pembroke.
Here.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
We have a quorum. Please rise for the pledge allegiance veterans, please salute or may salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the public on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, I understand we have some public comments tonight?
We do. The first will be Rita McElroy.
Mrs. McElroy, please come up to the podium and let us know if you're an Oklaun resident.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rita McElroy. I live at ninety-eight twenty-one South Kilborn. I've been there for fifty-one years. And I've been active wanting for quite some time to obtain protection at Ninety-Eighth and Kilborn from the heavy traffic that we I want to thank anyone who has assisted us in getting it, if we get it. And that I think it will save future problems with children and with many accidents that have occurred. I have driven for seventy years. And I can tell you here and now, the only accident I had was at Ninety-Eighth and Kilborn. So I'm hopeful that we don't, we will slow down and that the stop signs will assist our young and our old. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I thank you and all the trustees.
Thank you, Mrs. McElroy. Mrs. McElroy's been a Oklaun resident for most of my adult life. Her and her husband have been very instrumental in Oklaun. And Mrs. McElroy, it is on the agenda tonight, has been passed by our Traffic Review Committee. I know your trustee, trustee Jane Pembroke, is very much supportive of it. And we will call on the vote, and hopefully trustees will approve it tonight for you. And I do believe as a resident of the neighborhood, it is needed. Okay, thank you. Sure, I agree. Next.
Bill Lenhart.
Yes, sir. Have you just state your name? And do you live in Oklaun?
Yes, forty-seven years.
Thank you.
My name is, good evening. My name is Bill Lenhart. And my wife and I have lived at Fifty Forty Eighth Lamb Drive for the last forty-seven years. My next-door neighbor at Fifty Forty Lamb Drive has been in consistent violation of housing eight dogs on his property. The village ordinance allows for three dogs maximum for any household in Oklaun. These dogs have a history of climbing either over or digging under fences in order to get out of their yard. They have been running found loose and not leashed in the past. Some of our neighbors are in their eighties and nineties, so how would they ever protect themselves against these dogs without suffering severe injury or even worse? The smell of animal waste is overwhelming at most of the time. We cannot open our windows on the side of our house because of the stench coming from these eight dogs. We have a back porch that we have a difficult time enjoying due to the smell of animal waste. It is embarrassing to invite family or friends over due to the smell and the barking of eight dogs. We don't have the use of the side of our house because of the fear of attack by these dogs. My neighbor has a four-foot chain link fence that the dogs have jumped over and ran into our yard. The village has been sent pictures of these in the past. I do not want to live this way, and I'm sure you would not want to live this way. I would not wish this on anyone. This dog, they have a Belgian dog that's been trained to jump at least eight feet high. He swings from a tree on a rope, growling in an attack mode. If he can jump that high, the possibility exists that he can jump over our fence and attack anyone in our yard. I babysit a four, two-year-old and a four-year-old grandchildren, so we're deathly afraid every time those, we hear those dogs, that we go in the house. We feel that our neighbors are in imminent danger because of these eight dogs. The animal waste, barking, and health issues with each illegal dog being harbored in his home. The police, animal control, and property maintenance inspectors say they can only fine him. Well, this is not working, so the village must find another way to protect the citizens of Lamb Drive. If eight dogs isn't the magic number, what is, ten or twelve? The inaction of the village to resolve the situation becomes a pathway to breed more dogs and whatever heat he's fit, regardless of public safety. We are holding the village responsible for any harm that may ensue due to the action of the village to the remedy of pending, this pending danger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in my district. I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Mr. Lenhart, I am aware of the circumstance. I didn't realize how bad it was. We've had inspectors out there, as you know, often. We'll continue to go back out and make sure that we get some control of the circumstance. I might as well take this opportunity to announce that I'm having a public meeting on this and other subjects on September twenty-second. That's next week, Wednesday, at six-thirty P. M. in this, this room. I'll be happy to take a look into it, obviously, before that. But please feel free to come, and we'll discuss it further then, and we'll see what we can do to end this problem. I apologize.
Patricia Lenhart.
Just one more comment. I would ask our village attorney to look and see if there's any legal recourse. I know we have limitations with our village ordinances, and if people could just take the tickets and pay for them and not correct the problem, it just goes on and on and on. So if there's any legal recourse where we could do some research, chief, on this property and hand it to our attorney, maybe we can take some legal action above and beyond the village's powers. Thank you, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Could you state your name? And do you live in Oklaun?
Yes, I do. My name is Patricia Lenhart, and I have been an Oklaun resident for forty-seven years. I am here to address a very serious and dangerous issues for myself and my neighbors. My next-door neighbor, same neighbor, lives at Fifty Forty Lamb Drive. He is in possession of the eight dogs. The village code limits the amount of dogs to three. This illegal backyard dog breeding involves a Belgian Malinois. These dogs are known as breeds that are hostile, and they have acted in aggressive ways, as witnessed by over thirty residents who have signed the petition submitted to the village on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. There is documented proof that the owner is in fact a reckless dog owner. These dangerous events have been documented and shared with the police department and the village manager's office. I had to secure an outside vendor to rid our home of the rodents that surround our area due to the contamination of dog waste found in our neighbor's yard. We also had to install a twenty-seven-hundred-dollar privacy fence for our protection. The village claims that they do not have the authority to simply take someone's dogs. Unless action from the village occurs, every resident continues to live in fear and danger. We all would like to know if he is the only owner privileged by the village to be allowed to have eight dogs? And why does he have such benefits? It is most clear that deciding the owner with fines have not worked. In fact, the owner continues to inbreed more dogs. Last week, animal control was out. He clearly stated that he has no intentions of having the animals neutered. His lack of fear of fines have motivated him to have more dogs and allow more dogs to reside in unhealthy and unsafe conditions. When fines are not working, as we can all agree, the village must do more to fulfill the responsibility as elected officials to ensure everyone's safety. This dangerous and ongoing violations of village codes must end. Please, you must take action. Please.
Thank you.
Patty Lamert.
I am a resident of Oklaun. My name is Patty Lamert, and I have been attending this meeting to address and support my neighbor. I have witnessed these dogs attacking and fighting with each other. These dogs are vicious dogs and have seen them in packs roaming Lamb Drive. With eight dogs now, with more inbreeding, this property owner has become an unlicensed dog breeder. Why is this resident allowed to continue breeding dogs, and he has no plans to have them neutered? We as neighbors are in fear of these dogs as we should rightly be. The owner is negligent and has left these dogs unattended for days at a time. We, the neighbors on Lamb Drive, do not want to be bullied by this resident. He laughs at the village as he continues to follow none of the laws. Please consider our safety.
Thank you.
Sue Stazuski.
Good evening. My name is Sue Stazuski, and I'm here tonight in support of my Lamb Drive neighbors. For context, my husband is a lifelong Oklaun resident. We bought our house directly across from Fifty Forty Lamb Drive twenty years ago. It was a quiet, sweet block to raise our family. We are parishioners at Saint Linus, where our son attended grade school, and where my husband coached every sport, including football, for many years. We take great pride in keeping our property well-maintained, as do most neighbors on our block. My concern today is the fact that there are multiple vicious dogs currently residing at Fifty Forty Lamb Drive. I sent an email with photos to Mr. Stalker and Ms. Burry in March of this year. It outlined the fact that the neighbor at Fifty Forty Lamb Drive had many dogs that had become a threat to our safety and peace of mind. At the time, he had five vicious attack dogs. That was two original and a litter of three. But they've bred again, and now there are eight. How many more litters may be coming, and how many dogs will he be allowed to have in his home when the ordinance is a limit of three? That said, it's not the dog's fault. In fact, most of us are dog lovers and fear for their well-being. The neighbor at Fifty Forty either disappears for days at a time or has a revolving door of suspicious looking houses. Are the dogs being fed and cared for? It's hard to tell because all we hear is ferocious barking when anyone enters or exits the home. My husband and I have both been surprised and frightened by the dogs running up our driveway, barking and baring their teeth, putting us on guard every single time we open the door. We have called the police more than a few times. Several of our neighbors have also called the police, the village property manager, and animal control. Many of the neighbors even signed a petition, signed incentive petition. You no doubt already have a very thick file on Fifty Forty Lamb Drive. The nominal fees seem hardly severe enough for the terror we are experiencing on a daily basis. This just seems to be a lot of red tape and protections for a homeowner that continues to be an irresponsible dog owner. You are our elected officials. I cannot stress enough how dangerous and profoundly serious this situation is to us. Make our safety a priority. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Those are all the public comments.
Thank you. It's obviously a serious problem. I was aware that you were having problems there, because I'm copied on some emails. This might be the worst case of dogs, but I have seen people that have a number of dogs beyond the three limit, and it has taken considerable amount of time and effort, maybe years, to deal with it with the limitation authority that a village has on these type of situations. But again, I would ask our police chief, and I asked our village attorney and trustee Stalker to take these complaints as serious as you can on anything, and see if there is resolution for these complaints. I sympathize with having to live with a neighbor such as this.
Mayor, I'd like to say one more thing, and that is, well, we've got a problem with too many dogs. We've also got health hazards with them not cleaning up after the dogs. But third, we've got a breeder operating without a license in the village of Oklaun. And it seems to me that we've got enough problems from this one resident to find other ways to make sure that he doesn't continue with that habit. And I'll, I promise to get involved with this more than I have been. I, again, I apologize.
Thank you. Conflict of interest disclosure. Does any trustee have any conflict with any items on this agenda? Hearing none, I will move on to a wonderful life-saving award presented to one of our police officers, Officer John Vasquez. John, would you step up to the podium, Chief? Step up. Chief, would you like to read this, Chief? Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right, it's with great pleasure to introduce Officer John Vasquez. He's a twenty-one-year veteran of the police department. Was recently appointed as a field training officer for the day shift. And he is most deserving of this award I'm about to read out. On August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at four-thirty-five, Officer John Vasquez, while off duty, was attempting, attending a pool party in Orland Park, Illinois. While at the pool party, frantic children began screaming for help for a four-year-old boy who sank to the bottom. The homeowner jumped in and pulled the unresponsive boy out. Off-duty Cook County Sheriff's Deputy Michael Serapian started CPR along with Officer John Vasquez, who took over compressions and continued to render CPR and rescue breathing until the arrival of the Orland Park Fire Protection Personnel. The child was responsive and had pulse at the time of transport to Silver Cross Hospital. According to the Orland Park Fire Personnel, the reason the child is alive is for the quick actions of Michael Seraponian and Officer John Vasquez, rendering critical CPR in an instant. A summer pool party turned into a hectic scene fraught with danger of a child drowning. Officer Vasquez was able to quickly assess the situation, and inherently, his training kicked in, which enabled Officer Vasquez to resuscitate and save the life of a drowning victim. Officer Vasquez is a testament to the profession. We are truly never off duty. Officer Vasquez is a credit to the Oklaun Police Department and truly deserving of an Oklaun Police Department Life-Saving Award.
Congratulations, Officer Vasquez. Do you have a few words to say?
Well, I just, I want to say thank you to the department for giving me the training. Without the training, I don't know, the outcome would have been the same. I want to thank my family for being here. I want to thank the Jordans, who, the little son over there, Bodie, is the one we helped, and he's here today to. Sorry.
Maybe we can stand in front of the podium for cameras. There you go.
Thank you. But to the residents of Oklaun, this department is one of the greatest in the nation. And without the training that I received, this little guy wouldn't be here today. So I appreciate the award, and I appreciate the time that you guys came out to witness this. Thank you. Have a good night.
And I just want to echo the words of Officer Vasquez. I've worn many hats in this village. Today, I'm wearing the hat of the mayor. But I have never been prouder than wearing the hat of the Oklaun Police Department. You guys do a phenomenal job. You keep us safe at night. Congratulations to all of you. And the fact that we have so many officers, a testament to the team and the commitment that they make to the residents of Oklaun. Thank you, guys. All right, we're getting on to the hard business of the village. It'd be perfectly okay to leave if you want at this point.
Thank you.
And pull the doors. Would you shut, when everybody last ones out, pull the door shut, please? Or you can leave them open, but. I think we've pretty much covered it, and we're committed to try to find resolution. Ma'am, no. Okay, we're into the business of the meeting now. But I appreciate you coming in, and I sympathize again with your problem. We'll try to resolve it. All right, number six on the agenda is request to approve district, school district one-twenty-three's World Vision Six-K Race for water on Saturday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, call the vote, please.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Approval of the regular meeting minutes, number twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, dated August tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Motion, please?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Number eight is the approval of a special meeting minutes, number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, dated August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. A motion, do?
Motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business for village trustees. I'm going to start in District Six today. Officer Sack.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few updates tonight, and I'm happy to report that they're all good news. The first item has to do with flooding. As this board knows, flooding's been a major problem for decades, and we need a once-and-for-all solution. I've been working with the village manager and staff, and I'm happy to report significant breakthroughs. The MWRD has committed up to twenty million dollars in funding for flood mitigation in the Sixth District. More on this will be coming in future weeks and months. The next item has to do with economic development. Paizan's Pizzeria is finalizing design plans for an empty pad in the Stony Creek area with, by, right behind the Barrel Club. Birdie Sports Bar is scheduled to open on September twenty-fifth in Ranch Manor, and Hogwild will be mid-October at Ranch Manor. And then we've got two other things. Shake Shack is opening in a couple of days over in the Oklaun Commons. And Harley Davidson is in early planning stages for the old Sports Authority at Ninety-Sixth and. Now we got a safety issue. This one's been ongoing for a couple of years, and I'm kind of trying to pick up the ball on this. But Starbucks, Hundred and Third and Cicero, they're going to be rebuilding their store and redoing the whole area. So for more than two years, traffic has been a major issue with that intersection at Hundred and Third and Cicero. Cars often extend onto Hundred and Third and down Cicero, sometimes as deep as twenty-five cars. The problem existed before COVID, and it's only gotten worse since trustee Stalker and village manager Phelan have been very firm with Starbucks that a significant change had to occur. The new design will more than double the number of cars that could fit safely onto the site. The plan is very preliminary, but it's a step in the right direction. And finally, on the safety issue front, a resident from the Sixth District has been going to the Oklaun Park District and High School District two-eighteen board meetings and making disparaging comments about the Saint Catherine's and Saint Linus men's clubs. He's alleging that the clubs cause a problem in the neighborhood during their softball league at Lawn Manor and at the two-eighteen fields on Hundred and Ninth and Kenton. First, I want to disclose that I am the president of Saint Catherine's Men's Club and have been for three years. I have also played in that softball league with village manager Tom Phelan for over twenty years. Several of the past Oklaun police chiefs have commented and said the presence of the two to three hundred gentlemen that we have out there in the neighborhood parks on the night softballs being played actually allows them to reduce patrols in these areas. I've also personally witnessed numerous incidents where problems looked like they were going to occur, but our members helped prevent. One of them was last Thursday, when some juveniles pulled into that parking lot and started to do donuts. And some of our guys stopped playing softball and walked over there and told them there were children in the area, and they needed to stop, and they, they left. On the issue of noise complaints, I asked dispatch about this, and they looked back more than ten years and found fewer than six complaints. I just wanted to set the record straight on that, because a lot of good people do a lot of good things for our neighborhood and community, were unfairly attacked and maligned. That's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer, trustee Sack. I did have a conversation with the director of the Park District on that specific complaint from that gentleman, and he assured me that Saint Catherine's Men's Club violates no Park District rules and regulations. I believe there's more here, okay, than is on the surface.
Yes, and then I talked to him as well. We had a long conversation, and he assured me that, you know, we weren't doing anything wrong, and we haven't been for the past twenty-plus years.
It's a good organization that does a lot of good for our village.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'll tell you what, as the mayor, you had mentioned all these new businesses coming to town. I tell you what, I don't get a day off. I'm cutting ribbons at the hood, and that's a good thing. It's a good thing. All right, District Five.
Yeah, I just want to repeat one more time that there will be a District Five meeting right here in this auditorium on September twenty-second at six-thirty P. M. It'll be myself, many representatives from the village that will answer your questions, discuss whatever you want to talk about. And it's a better opportunity to have one-on-one contact, which I'm sure now I will have with some neighbors on Lamb Drive. That problem is much worse than I thought it was. We did have complaints about a month ago, and it's been radio silent. I guess that's, that's not really true, so we'll make sure that we get that problem solved.
Thank you, trustee Stalker. Trustee Pembroke, District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to congratulate trustee Mallow and his committee, a planning committee, on a great fall on the green. I thought it was outstanding. Great, great event for our community. Another reason to be proud about living in Oklaun. The other thing is, I want to welcome Shake Shack, a new business in the Commons, in Oklaun Commons at Ninety-Fifth and Plasky there. We had the river cutting with the mayor yesterday. It was a nice event. Looks like it's going to be a great establishment for our business community here in, in Oklaun, so we're very excited about that.
Thank you, trustee Pembroke. Trustee Mallow, District Three.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, just want to say some words of thank you. I can't talk. I've been, I've been talking all weekend, obviously, from falling to green. But the thanks go to our staff, our volunteers, for sure. Deidre Daseak and Bill Meyer did a fabulous job presetting everything for this event. The thanks to Tom Phelan is just, it's unheard of, is just what he did and put together here, be able to make this work so quickly with the threat of the governor and COVID and all this stuff happening. It really, really benefits the three charities. The three charities being Park Lawn, Live Like Abby, and the Courage Program. And I'm sure the proceeds are going to be more than they've ever seen. So I appreciate the work that our staff did and our volunteer, our employees. Chief, Chief Attoria was there all weekend. Thank you so much for, for your help and your guys' help to keep, to keep that, that fest safe. I was told that there were no incidents regarding twenty-one and older. There may have been some incidents with twenty-one and under, but not necessarily the twenty-one and older group that was there to enjoy the days and the nights and the evenings, and it's, it's good to hear that there were no other issues with that. Moving to Sunday concerts, we have three more Sunday concerts coming up, starting on September twenty-sixth, October second, and, I'm sorry, October third, and October tenth. Those will be right here on, on the green. They will start at six-thirty P. M. I know some of the signs out there say seven, but as it's getting darker later here, we're going to start those concerts at six-thirty. So all. So all three are set to start at 6:30, and we should be out of there by nine-ish, so we will finish up with three concerts on the green. And I'm sure another thanks to the mayor for being there, for falling to green. It was fabulous to work with you, the words that you had to tell our community each and every time, every band play. He was, he was a trooper in there, every single step and away, so thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Mallow. I, I will make some comments about the fest and matters of the, the president. All right, number 10 is the village manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add to what trustee Mallow spoke about the festival, and he is absolutely correct that the amount of effort that was put forth by our staff and our volunteers was nothing short of amazing. We, we really didn't formally commit to the festival until late June, early July, when normally we would commit to it in April and early May, and that had a lot to do with the fact that the restrictions that were coming down from the state and the money you have to expend in advance with the tents and the vendors and the staging, so we were very guarded about it, and it was really gratifying to see an, an organization come together, department heads picking up the phones and making calls to sponsors and asking for donations to help subsidize the cost of the event. It was just tremendous, and I've been involved in it for 17 years, and prior to that, I know it was Family Days, and it goes back to mayor to the...
1982.
Right.
Seventy-fifth anniversary of the village.
Carl Sira owns a company called KC Audio, who does all the audio and the staging, and on Friday, before the event kicked off, I went up to say hello to him, and he went so far as to say to me, and he's a man of few words, if you know him, he said, "I've been doing this for, this particular fest for 25 years," and he says, "I've never seen a group of individuals, our public works employees, work so fast, so professionally, so positively in pulling that together as quickly as they did." So hats off to Bill Meyer, Deidreziak, 12-hour days for a month and a half. It just really is gratifying to see all the faces. To trustee Mallow's point about the under 21, it is concerning. I, I worked the info booth at the festival for several hours, and behind the info booth is the village green, where normally you would see bright-eyed kids running around, enjoying themselves, and unfortunately, we saw many teens and pre-teens even moving and running around in groups menacing, fighting, vandalizing. At one point, I saw a young girl walking on the memorial, and one of our commissioners said she needed to get down from there, and her friend immediately went over and accused that commissioner deceitfully of, of putting her hands on her, and was so angry that one of our police officers retired, went up to her and tried to counsel her, and I heard him say, "How old are you?" And she said, "I'm 11." And it was, I mean, it was sad, and you wonder about our, our society and where we're at, parenting and watching over these kids, and, and you have a better appreciation for what law enforcement has to deal with on a daily basis because clearly, the net effect of this, you know, defy authority, don't listen to people in uniform, is trickling down to people as young as 11 years old. This particular girl was dressed like a cat's character. She had just had her face painted and was spitting with anger and accusing somebody of doing something that didn't happen. I don't mean to bring anybody down in that regard, but it just, it's, I think it's worth noting as we move forward as a community and saying to people, "We all have to do better." And these, these children, largely unsupervised, you know, I, trustee Mallow and I were talking about, you know, changes at the event may have to occur for their own safety and for the safety of the young kids that normally like to go on the village green and enjoy the, the inflatables or the slides or the playgrounds. So again, I don't mean to bring anything down. It was a tremendous success. Everybody had smiles on their faces, but that's one component. I know the police had, and the public works people had to deal with, and it was a, it was a big headache, so thank you, chief, and thank you to all the guys.
Thank you, thank you, village manager. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request the Board of Trustees approval for an architectural review, preservation commission referral for an honorary street sign at 10628 South Kenneth to be named Bob Gorman Way. And B is an ordinance approving that. Do I have a motion on A and B?
Uh...
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. C, request Board of Trustees authorization of a memorandum of understanding between the Cook County Sheriff's Office and the Oaklawn Police Department, requested by the Oaklawn Police Department. D is a request to approve the Traffic and Safety Committee recommendation for a four-way stop sign at 98th Street and Kilborn. Rita McElroy is the petitioner. And E is an ordinance authorizing that four-way stop sign. F is a request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission referral for a rezoning from PL Parks to C2 General Service Commercial at 4661 West 94th Street. Mark Landstorm is the petitioner. G is an ordinance, 211676, an ordinance rezoning one parcel of property commonly located at 4661 West 94th Street from PL to C2. H, a request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission recommendation for a two-lot re-subdivision with front, rear, side, and equal-side yard setback variations at 4661 West 94th Street and at 9400 South Kenton Landmark Engineering LLC petitioner. I, ordinance 211677, an ordinance approving a two-lot re-subdivision with front, rear, side, and equal-side yard setback variations at 4661 West 94th Street and 9400 South Kenton Avenue. J is resolution 211651, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Oaklawn and the Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways. K is a resolution 211652, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of termination to NORCOM and authorizing the village manager to negotiate a transition agreement. And L is a resolution 211653, resolution authorizing a second note mortgage modification agreement regarding the mortgage note and mortgage assignment of rent, security agreements, and financial statements for 11000 South Laverne Avenue, Oaklawn, Illinois. Is there a motion to prove? So move. Second?
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none, I call for the vote.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes. 12 is the village clerks' report. A is a dispersment resolution, 202116D dated August 24, 2021. And this...
That is, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say the amount.
Okay, okay.
That's for the amount of $1,618,272.72.
Thank you. B is dispersment resolution, 2021-16D-1 dated September 14th, 2021.
Do we want to have a motion for A first?
Yeah, normally, we take one, we take one at a time.
One at a time, okay.
We have A, we just need a motion to approve A.
I will motion. Okay, second. Roll call.
Okay. Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
B is a dispersment resolution, 2021-16D-1 dated September 14th, 2021.
And that is in the amount of $6,875,056.72.
Motion to pay the bills?
So, so move.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
C, general village manners, matters.
No new business.
No matters, okay. 13 is the village manager's report, oh, no, the president's report, I'm sorry. A is an ordinance, 21-16-78, an ordinance amending certain sections of Title III, Section III of the Oaklawn Village Code pertaining to liquor license classifications. Motion?
Motion to approve.
A second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Thank you. And as far as president's report, much was said about the fest, and it was all true. It was a wonderful event. I enjoyed every minute that I was on the green, and I know that that fest does not occur without the love and commitment of the employees of this village. Trustee Mallow, you should be very proud, and you should be very lucky you have all those volunteers and good employees for the village of Oaklawn.
You are correct, sir.
Yes, but in addition to that, on September 11th, we did a memorial, okay, at our 911 Memorial at 9:11 in the morning. It was attended by hundreds of people. There were speeches made. We commemorated the people that lost their lives on that day. It is available on YouTube. I had checked before I came to this village boarding. It's had over 1,500 views. I think it's probably the largest memorial in the state of Illinois, over 12 and a half tons of steel, and I think you'd be very proud if you're an Oaklawn resident to take the time and view that YouTube memoriam. That's all I have. We moved to 14, executive session, 2021-12 for the purpose of, one, approval of the closed meeting minutes of 2021-10 and 2021-11 dated July 13th, 2021, the setting of a price for the sale or lease of property owned by the public body, and, three, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of a public body. Motion?
A motion to move.
Second. Vote.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Thank you. That, we're going into an executive session, and only the pertinent people by law are allowed. We will come out of that session for an adjournment of the meeting.
Thanks, thank you.
Yes.
For what?